Um, I will call. There is no clock in this room? Oh, it's behind my head.
This room is so nice and bright.
I will call us to order at 6:00. We'll sign manifests to start.
Sorry, there's a lot because the first meeting was the snow day that I didn't go to. I was getting the manifest and then we had the delivery, so I had to get a little backlog.
It's okay. It wasn't that bad. I actually expected more when you said that. I was like, oh, yeah, okay.
This one has been missed.
Did I miss that one? Oh, I'm tired.
So did Jackie. That's why it takes three of us to...
We just wanted you to sign. It must have been stuck together.
Measure thrice, cut one.
The skinny ones get stuck together.
I need that one.
Um, okay. Um, so I'm going to start public input at 6:01 PM and it will be open for a half an hour per some legal.
RSA.
RSA and...
We used to.
We used to. Not anymore.
RSA and policy.
And policy. If it's... After we do minutes, if it's okay, I'd like to move the social emotional up, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. But let's review minutes first and then...
I didn't see anything.
I had one.
I didn't either.
Mini thing. Otherwise, they were beautiful. On the second page, this is all in favor, 3/1. So I don't think there's more of us.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good catch. Three, zero.
I think, 3-0, yeah. That was the only...
Oh.
That's a good catch. I didn't catch that.
Good job.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also need a second.
Oh.
I also second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, you're up?
Oh, my God.
Of course.
Um, so I need your packet.
Can you introduce yourself, just for those watching at home?
Absolutely. I'm an S.A.L. work school counselor. So the program we are using this year for S.A.L.'s Purposeful People by Character Strong, this curriculum has like three main goals. So I put our goals on here. I'll go through a little bit of each one of them. Within all of these goals, we're teaching certain skill sets based on nine different character traits that we go throughout the year. So every month is a character trait that we focus on. I am in classrooms for 30 minutes once a week, every classroom. And our three main goals are be kind. So in be kind, we're teaching social skills. And our character traits we use for our be kind, our first three months of school is empathy, respect, and cooperation. So the skills I listed on here, there's going to be more detail on the second page, but through the grades, the main topics we're getting are listening skills, friendships, understanding and practicing conflict resolutions, perspective taking and leadership skills. Our second goal is be strong, and those are executive functioning skills. Our three character traits in there are responsibility, courage, and perseverance. Some of my favorites. So that's following directions, staying focused, staying organized, school engagement, flexible thinking, and then setting goals with the older kids. And then our last major goal, which is the last three months, which we, if you can believe we're like in our seventh month, it's crazy, we have two more character traits left, which is, it blows my mind, and I think that's be well. And that's emotional regulation for the kids. So for the littles, that looks like identifying their emotions, being able to process and understand their emotions. For the older kids, it's more positive self-talk, stress management, leadership skills, things like that. Within that program, there's a ton of resources for the entire staff to use, and I just listed some things for you. There's playground activities, classroom visuals, student recognition resources, daily inspirational posts, there's own message ideas, there's videos, songs, book recommendations, mindful ways. All of the teachers have access to these things and they all tie back to the lessons that I'm doing. So whatever character trait we're working on, they can search those things. So that is the overview of it. And then I gave you this paper, goes into just a little bit more detail about like which skills we're working on which, what grades. So we have kinders through fifth grade and you can see what falls under each one of those goals. Really just more about what I explained to you, but some strategies for emotional regulation, engagement in school, focusing, things like that. The rest of the packet, this is just an example, the next page of playground activities. This is one that I just printed for one of our teachers today who asked me for it because we just started cooperation this week, which is really fun. So we're doing a lot of cooperative games in there. Next page, this is, the next two pages are examples of lessons. So this is our tree of choices. This would be a lesson, and this happens across all grades. And the root of their tree, so the basis of it is the root of the tree, is the root of the problem. What's the problem? And then you go to the branches, or the heart of the tree first, name your emotions. So what are you feeling? It could be more than one thing, but what are you feeling? The branches are your choices of how to deal with it, right? So a small problem, maybe I just walk away, maybe you just breathe it out, you talk it out with somebody. So they use this, the teachers have this hanging in their room, so this is just something we refer back to the kiddos with when they have a problem, like let's find out what the problem is, let's talk about how it's making you feel, and then how do we fix it? So this is an awesome lesson for them. And this is across grades, all of them. This next one is older, three through five, and this is, this is a goal sheet. I love this. So they put their goal, one of the things we talk about is what's your goal at the top of the mountain? And then what are your obstacles? So we relate it back to like, you know, if you're going on hike in the woods and you come across a stream, how do you get across it? Like it's something you didn't plan for. So like, what do you, what's your goal? And we talked about wax museum, fifth graders are working on wax museum. Here's your end game. What are some obstacles you're going to run into and how are you going to fix them? So just trying to get them to think about obstacles before they happen. So this is another example. And then, these are just examples of the recognition that I give them at the end of every month. They all get a little like, you know, you finished cooperation, you finished this. So they each get one of those, which is cute. And then the rest of them, I just printed out for you guys, our, our character traits. And these are all in classrooms. We go through, again, like the teacher is going on doing a month on respect. The teachers are sort of following up with smaller mini lessons and the rain breaks and the big activities, things like that. So that is about it. Do you guys have questions?
I wrote three down, but I can't...
Oh.
I know.
Go for it.
I love this. This is awesome. I love you. I love the program. It's great. So I'll start with that. But I had a question. This, I hadn't heard of Character Strong before. It sounds great. Just curious about how we chose that and, or is that the one program that all the S.A. uses? Or how does that work?
No, so I actually brought it to Susie because there is one other school using it, which I found out after I learned about it. So I read a book over the summer called Deep Kindness that actually Ellen had told me about in a meeting one day. And so I was like, oh, so I bought it. I read it on my way down to Key West on a three-hour plane ride, and I was like, this is fantastic. So I read it again. And as I started researching Houston Kraft, who wrote it, I found out that he is backing this program also.
Got it.
So I just started doing a little bit of research about Character Strong. It's all research-backed and, but he sort of is the face of it.
Okay.
So that's how I came across it. And then as it turns out, I believe there's another school in the S.A.U. using it who started last year. We just started this year.
Oh, okay.
And they had really high recommendations for it. So that's why we did it.
Awesome. So that was two questions. And then the other one was, I think I know the answer, but I just want to... I love that there appears to be like basically curriculum so that you have clear, like this is awesome, right? A clear matrix of who's getting what when.
Yep.
If like a student or a class needed sort of like a primer on something that was like now, I mean, I know, I've experienced at home the result of intervention or exposures to some of those topics earlier. I guess my question is, the, A, just want to make sure that that's sort of the approach. And then if it then becomes, comes time to have that formally reintroduced, is it just sort of like, hey, remember when we had that talk earlier? And sort of get revisited? Or is, or does the curriculum swap? Like what's been your...
So, all right, if I understand your question, so I'm thinking of a scenario, like sometimes a teacher will come to me and say, like, my class is struggling with this, you know? And maybe I go off topic a little bit to deal with a certain issue that's going on, you know? Sometimes about like a friendship, you know, like we're, they're really having a hard time with friendships and we've kind of passed that and we come, we come back to it. And I always do. We always come back to it. So, you know, I'm talking to the teachers all the time. So we're, so even though I do have a curriculum to follow, there's a lot of times I'm going off curriculum or adding.
Right.
There'll be an extra 10 or 15 minutes to add in for stuff, yes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I figured that was the answer. I just, since you're here and for the purpose of enlightenment, yeah. And you like questions.
I'm already here. Any more?
My question is actually for Susie on this, is how does this dial into the work that like the teacher and staffs are doing with Mariam?
Yep.
Is it? Okay.
Conflict resolution.
Yep.
Yeah.
Ownership, engagement, all of those things, instead of it being a compliance base, like these are the rules. You follow these rules. It's how are we going to create a community? How are we going to work through our differences? How do we give each other space to be able to navigate, even if we aren't great friends? Or we still have to be respectful with each other? That's all the things that we also work with Mariama with. So it blends quite beautifully.
Okay. I knew that was the answer, but I still wanted to ask it.
Some of the activities I've done with the kids, I'm trying to think of the one it was, I don't remember, but I came back to my office and I had it all laid out on my table and she's like, that looks exactly like what we just did with Mariama, like very close.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's really good. Okay. That's awesome. I love it. Clearly, because we just had a powwow about stuff, so it's working. Yeah. That's great feedback.
And to both of your points, Tracy does do a really nice job. Just like when our teachers get data and we have to reteach something, we respond to that and our instruction should respond to that. Tracy does that on the emotional level, right? You don't learn one lesson and then you've got it.
Especially as an adult.
And now it turns to, you know, where a lot of the class does get it and they're using it and there's these one or two who just struggle with it. And so then you just do a small little lunch group, you know, and you work on those skills with a smaller group, so that happens too.
And are the, so it's very colorful and I'm assuming that's on purpose. Are there like, are there like color triggers for kids? Like I know that, I saw in the hall, yeah, the zones, I saw in the hall, the red, green, yellow and stuff like that. So I'm assuming that's all part of this.
So this is not tied in with like those.
Okay.
I think it's really just a colorful like program. It's very engaging for them. There's like the songs, oh my gosh, all they want to do is listen to the songs, watch videos. But the videos are really cool. They're very short, two to three-minute videos. There's like a little cartoon character, but real kids talking about these topics. So it's really nice. And then the songs are just fantastic. They're fantastic.
Super catchy.
Very catchy songs, like you don't hear the kids outside. What does respect mean to you?
That's awesome.
And just a shout out to Tracy. She's doing a ton of work. The Zones of Regulation, she paired up with Kirsten Milks, who's our OT, and they did a PD on, so that Zones of Regulation is aligned throughout all of our classes. And what we often, I know I feel like a broken record when I say this, often what we recognize and should recognize is, we think that, you know, special education, these things are, you know, these specialized instruction just is for top-tier kiddos that need it. But what we know is that they work in our fabulous for everyone and should be universal. So Zones of Regulation really was for the top-tier kids when it came out of like, how do you, you know, how do you regulate? How do you recognize what zone you're in and what we're trying to do in everything? Whether it's Mariam, whether it's Tracy, whether it's our OT, is how do we align everything where all of our classrooms are saying it? So the students know whether or not I'm with Miss A.L. Ward or I'm in Miss Rosenblatt's class or I'm in art, you know, you can say, I'm in the yellow zone right now and I need a strategy to get me back into the green. So she's done great work with that, that was a really powerful PD she did. And then another shout out is her work that she does with our student leadership team. Today, we had 17 kiddos come at 8:00 to do tumbling.
Big hit.
Huge hit.
Huge hit.
And that's a perfect example.
I tried to get Philip to come do it.
Oh, he told me he didn't want to go.
Okay.
But it's a perfect example of how kids...
It's from Susan Hare Grayson.
It was the students who said, we want to do this. And because of that, there was huge engagement.
It was the first thing I heard about after school.
The best thing to do, talk to them again, like, since it's happened.
I probably saw his friend in there this morning. I'm surprised he didn't come to me after. But the leadership team, not that I want to bore you with all of these things.
No, it's all good.
They're so great. They're planning a Down syndrome awareness day.
Oh, are they going to play funky socks?
Yep.
Yay!
Yeah, it's going to be fantastic. Mr. K is writing a song.
Oh.
Yeah, Holsey's with an extra crony.
I love it.
Holsey's with an extra crony.
I love it.
So it's going to be pretty amazing. The kids are playing it all themselves. It's pretty awesome.
Oh, that makes my heart happy. I love that so much.
So you'll be seeing something.
I always wear crazy socks.
Yeah.
Kudos to Tracy.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Good job. Thank you. And thank you for feeding our turtle.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any, everybody's good?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Okay. We did minutes, we did public info, we did, so you're up, Molly.
Great. Thank you for signing the financials. As a manifest, I should say. So included in your board pack is a current year financial. We did have an increase of $12,512 from last month. We had some supplies. We made some adjustments and encumbrances for the psych services and OT based off of actuals. We had a little bit of operations in plant for the rooftop unit and supplies and radios, and a little bit of incumbents for health and dental insurance. I did add some areas where we're seeing revenue higher than planned. So the cost for the TF Moran, the, I guess they're engineers, that resides in your expenses. So this is the revenue to offset that. Because you can't, in the accounting rules, really leave the expense. It's got to be an expense and a revenue. And then we are seeing interest rates higher than planned and the switch from TD to Citizen, which was great. So with that, with the expenses less than planned and the revenue higher than planned, you would be looking at like $143,000 in unreserved fund balance at the end of the year, prior to the funding of the trust.
Panning, prior to the vote?
Funding of the trust funds. So your trust funds are, be funding on a fund balance pending the vote. And then that would come out of the trust funds first, or go to the trust funds first.
And the, the OT services is...
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, is that going to, do you think we're going to run hot on that then?
So what happened was we, it was the end of last year, so we had already budgeted right, six months before. And they increased across the board.
Okay.
And so we knew upfront that that was going to be a cost for us. And that's part of...
We planned accordingly for next year.
Exactly. We planned accordingly.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I'll make sure. And the psych services, that, we were expecting that to go down because we adjusted some things, right? Okay. So I have two clarifying questions I wanted to ask. One is this grid of previous year fund balance. So just so I'm making sure I'm understanding this correctly, by school year, the ending fund balance is what's left at the end. Then we minus out anything for the trust funds, correct? Which is the retained amount?
Correct, yeah.
And then so that last column, the amount to reduce the taxes, so last year we gave back to the town $41,096.
That was the credit to offset.
The credit to offset taxes. And then prior to that, we kind of hovered, just for conversation, around one, between $100,000 and during COVID, $198, but we know we got a lot of kind of funding and stuff that year as well.
Yes, so COVID, there was a combination of things, there was expenses not being spent.
Right. Because we were close.
Well, really close.
Not everything was operating. We were remote learning, but we didn't have like people in the building.
Yeah, so like the bus contractor, I think paid half of that. We kept all the lights on low, we kept the heat just so the pipes wouldn't freeze. We didn't have a lot of the typical expenses. And so, and we had a lot of COVID relief funding come in.
Correct, okay.
So with the revenue from the COVID relief funding and then us not having as much expenses, that combination made the higher fund balance.
Do you happen to remember, recall like how much funding was given during that time?
Well, that's a loaded question.
I was just curious.
So there was multiple rounds and multiple sources. And then some of it went as form of grant, some of it went as form of expense relief and some came as revenue. So it's really a difficult question to answer.
No, that's fine. I think, I just wanted to kind of make sure, because I, I mean, I accredit this like $41,000 as good budgeting. More appropriate budgeting, I would say.
Because if you have that much left over at the end of the year, like then your budget's not accurate.
Yeah, so I think that that's good. So that leads to my next question, just for clarifying purposes, since the election is next week and people are going to be paying close attention. The operating budget includes teachers' current salaries and levels and all of that. And the, but the, the, the second article is the increase, right?
Yep.
So it, if the increase goes through, is that the 3.252 number? Or, I'm sorry. No, it's okay. Or like the, the, this, does this number roll into the proposed? You would add them together? So that would actually be...
Yep. So each of those warrant articles is a different appropriation. And then what happens is the next step in the process we complete, it's called the MS-22, it zips it all together.
Okay.
So also, I don't know if you have a copy of the 26 review? It would be posted with the warrant, it was posted with the warrant. That is, you might just have the warrant there.
I think I just have the warrant, sorry.
So what happens is each warrant article has an appropriation to it. All those appropriations get added together.
Okay.
And the ones that are from fund balance, you don't raise in the tax rate.
Correct.
Which is the trust fund. And so the ones that would be raised in the tax rate would be Article 1 and Article 2, because that's, the operating budget is 1, the collective bargaining unit is 2. And so in Article 1, you have the choice between the proposed and the default. And then Article 2 is the CPA increase for those teachers.
Correct, okay.
So if Article 2 was to fail, Article 1 contains the teacher's salaries at the current fiscal year level.
Current level.
Yep. And then, so does the default.
And so does the default, correct? Okay. And yes, okay.
And if this was not a negotiating year, the default would include the increases for the teacher because it's a contractual obligation.
Correct, okay.
But since it's not, I'm sorry, it is a negotiation year, the default and the proposed both have current year salary rates.
Okay, perfect. You summed that up perfectly.
That was pretty good.
Thank you. Right? No, it was very helpful.
It's the first time you asked that question.
I get asked it and, and then I was like, I think I'm saying it right. And I have been, I just wanted to make sure.
And then also, any changes in FTEs would be in Article 2.
Correct. Okay. Awesome. Sorry, I didn't mean to hijack that. Do you guys have any other questions on the... Why did we switch banks, I'm curious.
Well...
To get a higher interest rate. Well, it caught on to that, but I didn't want to switch banks.
Citizens approached me with a service called Positive Pay, which they might have called something different. And so did TD. And I see them at a lot of business administrator meetings. And we had citizens and they were going to charge me a fee for it. And it was free with TD. And also, Citizens was not giving me a very good interest rate. And I tried nicely to ask them to increase it, they wouldn't. And so I kindly went with TD.
Good negotiating. I'm here for it.
Data-based decision-making.
Nice job. Out of this, Susie, is there anything that we should have on our radar that we may have to dip into any funds that aren't expected at this point?
No.
Okay.
There are things that I would love to buy out.
Always. Okay.
Any questions?
I, I don't. Did you, Bobby?
The only, I circled, but it's not that important, but I was curious about the radios. Are those like the walkie-talkies that we have? We just need to replace them. How are they?
I'm sorry?
Are they, they working good now?
They're great.
Do, I know it came up before. How are we on radios?
We're, we're good.
We're good. We have a lot, right? Okay.
At first, I thought it was like...
We do. I know that that was kind of, that was the goal, so, awesome. Okay.
I mean, it's good to have two or three of those backups?
Yeah, of course. Awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
It's much shorter than the worst today, so.
We try. We really try. Okay, so committees, policy, you guys did not meet?
Oh, you stole my thunder. I was all excited to share that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't meet. I never can say that.
Darn, sorry.
Which was a little break.
Okay. Superintendent evaluation?
We haven't met either.
Really? Really? I'm the only one that's been going to meetings? Awesome. No, no worries, everybody. I got, I got it. Wish I'd known that, I would send you, no, I'm just kidding. Um, the communications and community engagement committee, we had our last meeting because our official capacity has been completed. We, um, met, oh, before vacation, um, to go over the survey results, um, which will be used as part of the strategic plan. The results are gonna be shared at the next joint board meeting. And then, once, um, the joint board has seen the final results and, and the, um, full report, we will, um, have that out on the website for the community to see and, um, we'll be asking principals and, and administrators to share that out as well. So, um, all good feedback and I think we were successful in our goal as the communications committee. Safety and security, we also met. Um, which was really good. Um, then, like I just asked about radios, we're in good, we're in really good shape. I felt really good about, after that meeting and, um, you know, we, we don't share a lot for safety reasons, but we're in good shape. Is the overall feeling across the SAU, so.
Absolutely.
Right. Do you, anything, anybody?
One of our strengths, for sure.
It is definitely one of our strengths, so. And all of our, our drills have been happening and everything's been really good, so. Curriculum and philosophy, is that you?
No.
We've never, none of us have ever gone.
Well.
I thought that was a co-op. I was told it was a co-op thing.
It's never been on.
No.
Oh, okay. Well, that's an accidental addition.
It's okay. I was like, um, cause I feel like I asked last year about it and they said it was a co-op thing.
Okay, I believe that's correct.
Okay. Principals report.
Sure. So going back to last month, um, a lot of behind the scenes work has been happening to make the transition for our fifth graders, not just New Fields, but all of our fifth graders in the SAU have a really smooth transition. The CMS team has done an amazing job with student surveys, um, parent nights. Um, I've actually taken some parents over just for tours, one-on-one. It was one of our students, uh, fifth graders who asked to go just as New Fields and then our New Fields alum, sixth, seventh, and eighth are gonna meet them there.
Oh, fun.
And take them through their locker and auditorium and lunch.
Oh, they'll love that.
That would be super great. Um, and then, of course, we have our, um, El Nova, where all of our small schools get together. So some friendships can be built there. And then another thing that's happening is, um, the, the current fifth grade class are pen pals with Kensington's fifth grade class. And so we're gonna do a few field trips, um, to get those two together that we're gonna host a time for them to come over here and have lunch, recess, and do a unified arts, and then their, our fifth graders are going over there.
Oh, that's great.
Again, another way to, um, just build some of those friendships. Uh, we had a parent night, uh, for our fifth grade parents, um, with Mariam Levy because she's, we're doing a lot of work, just making sure that that transition is a really smooth one. Uh, parents had fantastic ideas that we shared with Drew Berstow and his team up at CMS, so, um, there's been, it, it's impressive how much work has gone into that transition night, and I hope our students feel that. I hope they feel really comfortable once they go. Our Read Across America week was super fun. Um, instead of mystery reader, we had masked reader. And so the students just saw the mask of the person, and then there was a big reveal or unmasking at our assembly at the end of the week. Uh, Chief Young and Mr. Twombly and Mr. Kay were voices along with Jody, and so it was the first time that they didn't know the male voice, um, just being one. Cheryl Fay, who did the Ruth Bader Ginsburg, was an outstanding assembly. And our teachers and, um, Cheryl Fay all commented on how amazing our students were. Cheryl said of all the schools she's been to, our students were the most well-behaved and asked the most engaging questions of her afterwards. It was really, um, it was a really nice compliment for our students to get. PE Linda Jauet continues to bring in great activities. She brought in the North East Passage, which you know are the, the wheelchairs. And then we're doing skateboarding right now. The kids have loved that. And then she was part of the tumbling class this morning. So she's, she's doing a great job. Um, if you walk down the hall, if, after the meeting, you'll see the huge mural of all the flowers. That was, um, a connection with, uh, Crown for Carmina that the art teacher did for Read Across America. Um, and then our exciting, exciting new is the renovation of just a, kind of a refresh of our library. So if you think about going into our library, there's an office on the left-hand side that actually has a door to the library, right, two doors. So we've done lots of measurements and we're trying to do this very economically. It's our last student space that has not been kind of refreshed, and, and so this spring we're doing that. Most children's libraries, you know, the shelves are just at eye level and we have ours stacked. And so, um, eighteen of the shelves are actually gonna go into that small room and be stacked and they're gonna be, it's gonna be our research room. So like dictionaries, presidents, the things that aren't circulated a lot will be in that room. Um, and then we're gonna, it's still gonna be an instructional space, but we're gonna have, um, two bean bags in there with lights. So it's a cozy spot that they can curl up with a book and read and feel like it's, they're surrounded by books. But then what that will do for the library is really bring everything down to eye level. Over, from now until the break, um, we have a whole plan worked out where the bookshelves will be pulled out after the eighteen are removed and put in the research room. They'll be cleaned, probably like cleaned, cleaned, uh, and then the walls will be cleaned. And by the second week in April, we'll have a brand-new, cleaned, freshly painted, um, library. Eye level, uh, we've ordered a few pieces of, uh, furniture in there. And then, um, if the fifth grade needs a fifth grade gift, uh, to give, a mural in that space might be, um, a really great addition. So just a really nice overhaul so that that space is really the heartbeat of our school. So, and then today, I was telling Ellen earlier, you know, we've spent a, a, quite a bit of professional development time on our writing this year and really aligning our writing and getting students to understand that they have to provide evidence for their writing and, um, to be good writers. And then, on top of that, is a byproduct, they do well on a test, right, which is our SAS test. So, um, the SAS test for writing was early this year because it's, they're recalibrating at the state. And they actually have, um, humans grading it this year instead of computers. So they made, they made everybody take the test in these first two weeks in March. So our students took it. Today was the first time that our fir- fourth graders took their first part. We have them do their run-through and then the second day they edit and make sure that's what they wanna press send with. When I walked into Kim Wardlaw's fourth grade class today, she said, "That is the least anxious, most engaged, happy testing I've ever been a part of." And so the fact that our children feel really relaxed and feel like they can tackle something without this anxiety provoking, that's what we want, right? And, um, they feel really confident. Part of that professional development that we did was we actually, there are four modules in the SAS that you can take in writing and then the kids see how they get scored, and we've done that throughout this year. And so they've been able to navigate it instead of the first time, the test navigating it. Um, so we think that that's played a part of it. But I don't wanna oversell it, cause I, but I feel, I feel really great that our students felt comfortable taking the test.
I know a few middle schoolers that felt pretty comfortable too.
Right, I was gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, they, they were like, "We had our rap drafts all done yesterday and I, I just wanted to get it in." So the two-step is.
That's a big positive.
It was a big positive.
Absolutely.
For my non-writers, yep. For them to say it, I was like, "What is happening right now?" So that's good. That's awesome.
Those are the big things.
Great.
We have kids with principal today.
I heard, and I didn't know, and so I sent to lunch and then I was like, she's like, "I didn't eat my lunch." I was like, "Oh, I forgot, sorry."
They learned all about what her favorite?
Oh, Lord, have mercy, I'm so sorry. She learned all about skiing too, in the rain, and all the things. Just kidding. Um, no, that's awesome. Um, okay, so, anything else, Suzy, from your front? Um, old business?
Oh, mhm, I do have one more, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So in that theme of really making things student-centered and the, the rooms being clearly for the students, we are copying a sister school in the SAU. Uh, they actually wrote a grant for twenty-five thousand to, um, change up their seating to be flexible seating, to make it more child-centered, to, um, update some furniture, and they received that grant. And so we're gonna do a lift and copy and, um, do that for next year so that, uh, we can have some of that flexible seating in our, in all of our classrooms. Cause it does make a difference to be able to sit in a bean bag and read your book or.
Or have a rocky chair when you're antsy pants.
So.
Or stand, yeah.
That's right, have standing desks, all those things.
Standing desk, yeah.
Really expensive, um, equipment and furniture is one of our most expensive thing after technology and our teacher's salary.
Suzy, um, that just reminded me, uh, remember a couple months ago, we talked about possibly trying to sell or get rid of the picket tables? Has there been any update on that?
Yep. So in April, we'll put that out. I'll put it out in a newsletter, um, that people can.
Oh, okay, cool.
Come and get them. But we are keeping a few, you said, right?
We're keeping five.
Okay. Um, that brings me to the school's safety project. Um, so I know last time we met, we discussed, um, being at.
Spaghetti dinner.
Spaghetti dinner. I am out of town that weekend. Are either or both of you available?
Yes.
Sixteenth, right?
My whole family's coming and from New York, but then we're going to the spaghetti dinner.
Yeah, okay.
So, but I was gonna be, so I'll be present.
Okay.
Um, I will be probably, um, not, I don't know that I could represent all three of us.
Oh, yeah.
Cause I'm gonna be pulled in.
No, of course.
You can make it, thank you. But yeah, I'll be there.
I'd have to double-check my schedule at home, cause for some reason sixteenth, I feel like there's something on my calendar, but I can't think of what it is.
Yeah, so next weekend.
It's the Wizard of Oz at, um, CMS, but it's a one P M. uh, show.
Yeah.
And what time is it again, the spaghetti dinner?
It's at six, I think.
I put it on.
Six, five? Oh, it might be five.
I'll tell you.
Is it five? Sorry.
It is, five P M.
Five to what?
When, I think whenever, I think they're kind of, like whenever people are full of spaghetti. So is it possible for us to, um, print out some stuff for people to take? Like maybe even just the, the mock-up of what it is or, um, I know we had talked initially before break and everything about putting together some talking points.
Jenny, here's, can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
My thought about that is, from my understanding, the mock-ups were simply an idea that we had, right? And, and I feel like it's been very, some have concluded that that is our plan, that we are budgeting lots of money and we are definitely going forward with doing that.
Yeah, there, we can never budget that money.
I'm sorry, but that we are intending to spend all that money.
We would go out to, for a bond. We would put it on the ballot.
But I think, um, something I just want, would have wanted to say is I don't know that, have we as a board decided that that plan is what we are advocating for?
So.
And, uh, let me just, and want.
It's my understanding, it's what it is, is right.
Can I finish my head?
Sorry.
And that that we want folks to understand that that is our full plan, because my, if it is, then I think having folks have a copy of stuff to take home to look at is good. If it's, if it is an idea that we had that we want to continue to think about, then I feel like the time at the spaghetti dinner, especially if I'm the one person who's gonna be there, is to say, "This is one rendering that we've gotten and we want to spend more time this next year gathering information on it."
So my understanding is, right now, what we're doing is getting the idea, right? Cause we need to know how much money a project like this is gonna cost. Because then we have to go to a bond hearing to get the approval from the town to even apply for that set amount.
Right.
It has to then pass voting. After it passes voting, it goes out to bids to all these different companies.
Right.
So even though this is the amount it comes in at now, we could get an offer less than that. You know what I mean? Like it's good.
No, I do, I think, and Jenny, please tell me, correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, but, um, I know that you've been doing a ton of work meeting with a lot of people, so I don't, I want you to.
Of course, no.
Understand that, I recognize that. And so if the, if the end result of all that work is that you as the chair represent, or as the chair and the board representative is saying, "This is what we are proposing to do."
We voted on it in, in January, and had we been able to do a bond hearing in time, we, it would have gone on this ballot.
Oh, I understand, but we voted.
So the three of us voted.
If I'm remembering correctly, after like an hour and a half of a lot of conversation, we, I asked the question, "How can we get on to the next agenda item?" Cause I just wanted to know what was the process to, to move beyond that conversation. And our lovely finance person said, "The only, if we wanted to move ahead with this project, the next step that would have to occur is that we'd have to have a bond hearing."
Correct.
And so I believe that all we voted on was to have a bond hearing. Is that correct?
Correct, which made.
Which, which we weren't able to do.
Right.
Period.
Correct.
So, so that's a reason why if we're planning on having copies of something shared, I wanna, if it's just me at that spaghetti dinner.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, "This is a, this is a rendering that we were given, that Jenny, as our chair, has met with lots of people, has, that we've been given, and we voted to have a bond hearing last month that we didn't have." That's all, I, I don't know that I would be able to say.
And we are still, we are still looking for feedback from, we had talked about getting feedback from the town, uh, and having multiple, so this would be like the first, this would be the first of many.
Community conversations.
Community conversations.
To get feedback.
Thank you.
That, that's what I want.
That's exactly it. So we were, we were in agreement to move forward in January on the bond hearing.
Correct.
On, we were unable to have a bond hearing due to timing, therefore we had, we delayed the project and are going out to get more community.
Input.
Input.
And to make sure that we have accurate facts and data that we're putting out.
Correct.
So that the messaging around the project is really clear in terms of the purpose.
Correct.
And the intended outcomes.
Yeah, because I think there's, there have been a lot of, um, conversations that were, um, uh, not necessarily accurate about, you know, it started as a side, as a crosswalk and turned into a parking lot. Well, that's not all it is, is there's a lot of safety implications.
I totally agree.
There have been a lot of safety, wh- once we dove into the project, it became a little bit more of a robust project due to the fact that there were safety concerns with the traffic pattern and, and not just the, not just the crosswalk. So it, it turned into more of a robust project based on those findings once we dove into it. Um, so, in, you know, for, for me, it's, it's not a, and it's been discussed at, at safety and security meetings as well. It's, it's about, it's about safety and not just a parking lot.
Right.
Um, so I think that that's the message and, um, I also would say, of course, we want town input. I mean, this, this type of project has been put out there in the past, but also the, um, landscape of the school looked different, the landscape of the town looked different, the amount of people in town looked different. Um, so we've seen, you know, a number of issues, you know, speaking with the fire department and the traffic pattern. If there's an emergency, being right next to the school, those kinds of things. So I think just, um, having a back and forth conversation with the community at this point to get their input and also give factual things on what we have learned is, is important and engage, engage that conversation. Not that we're doing this and we don't care what anybody thinks, cause that's not at all what it is.
And, and so that's the only reason why I wanna make sure that if, again, if I'm gonna be there representing the board with a copy, I wanna make sure I know what, how I'm framing this gov, this piece of paper. This is not, "Let's figure out a way to, to get to this, no matter what you say," cause that's not what we're saying.
No, 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 not at all.
This is a starting, this is what we have before us as a board. Let's talk about, we wanna explain to you how we arrived here, uh, and let's talk about.
I think it's also important to educate the town on impact fees and how they're used and what they're used for, because we did use impact fees for this project, for, to start this project and to, to fund the, the research behind it. Um, and I don't think, I don't think a lot of people understand that.
I totally agree.
So I think that's a good conversation piece too, to say, "Listen, when, when new developments come in, there's impact fees that are, are given to the town by developers and those have to be used by a certain point." And these, the ones that we used were ready to expire, so. Um, yeah, and, you know, projects like this, they don't always, they don't always pass the first time. They develop, they turn into, they, it could turn into something completely different, we just don't know until we get community engagement. But based on all of the research that we've done so far as a board, myself, the town, Chris, um, and all the players that have been to all these meetings, um, this was the, kind of the best foot forward.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Um, I also, the other question I would have is if we are gonna have material available, it might be nice to have like version one, cause we had, that, we had version two, right? The one where there's removal of.
Yeah, we, yeah.
I'd like to be able to show that so folks know.
That we've, already made an adjustment.
Correct, because as a board member who's not been part of those conversations day to day, thank you for doing that again. We, I forget, I think it was December, or it was cold, very cold and early in the winter when we were first seeing, given the renderings. And we asked, "Hey, is there a way to."
Take out.
Take out X, Y, and Z. I don't know that the public really knows necessarily that all of that has already happened.
Yeah, I think that that's a very good point, cause I also think, we, we also got feedback from Suzy and Jane and people at the school to say that, you know, that front part that we initially was, is just not, it's not the best idea. Um, so I think we've already, we've, as a board, have already done some due diligence in getting feedback from, you know, the, the chiefs, both chiefs. Um, people in town, um, Suzy and, and her staff and, um, you know, obviously the SAU as well. So, yeah, I think it's important to kind of discuss the time. So, yeah, I think it's important to kind of discuss the timeline. We first started talking about this in July of last year was our first meeting. Well, I mean, we started talking about it before that, but that was our first formal meeting was July. But, I mean, I think the chief brought it to us last spring.
Maybe making the timeline.
Yeah.
I, I agree, that would be helpful.
For the spaghetti dinner, who should I let know if I can be there?
Do you know me now? Because I'm gonna be there. It's gonna be a crazy, I have all my New York family here.
For some reason, the sixteen is just sticking in my head, like there's something that day and I can't think of it.
And we had talked about having some materials. If we don't have materials for the spaghetti dinner, I think it's, it's still a great opportunity to engage.
To share all that.
To authentically gather feedback through natural conversation.
I agree.
And I think, you know, one other component to point out about, you know, yes, we weren't able to get the bond hearing due to the timing and whatnot, but I think there's also such inherent value in opening up the process and making sure that it's really thoughtful and that, and that we're giving everybody an opportunity to have a voice in something that is a really large project.
Absolutely.
So I think it, I think it actually worked out
It did.
In a way that is beneficial for everybody.
So I do have a question though, because with this project now, gonna be a whole nother year, right? Have we started, has anyone started thinking of like temporary plan to try to fix some of the concerns?
That was my next question.
We had talked at the last meeting about, I know we, we met with Chief Young. I mean, and you know that they're out, out there. So there, it's, there's extra staffing that is, will help, I can't even talk, sorry.
Mitigate the safety concerns.
Mitigate the, the safety concerns. You know, I think the parents knowing is, is a big, I know a lot of parents who are walkers now are actually walking their kids to the back of the building because they know this is an issue. So, I, I mean, those are two things that, right off the bat, I think we've kind of started addressing.
Raising awareness is really powerful.
Yeah, raising awareness, because I don't think people, like me, I wouldn't know that there was a side, because my child doesn't really cross at the sidewalk, the crosswalk. But the walkers' parents, they know what's going on. So I think, I think raising awareness that there is an issue is the first step, I would say. And just Suzie and the chief have been working really closely to make sure, I can't, I don't wanna speak for you, but make sure that there's staffing out there and, and things to keep the kids safe, so.
I think that's awesome. Definitely it's a good first step to that.
And I do know that, that when there is a large traffic backup, the police have asked parents to leave and come back.
Yeah.
Because that, that was an issue a few times where there was like a big backlog and there, there was just too many cars. So they have been actively asking people to take a lap and come back until there's room, so.
Do you think there's value in, like I know when, at dismissal, there's like, alright walkers, they, they're called separately, the students, to almost have something like that for the parents after, like not, like for, I don't know who to do, maybe we can call it, like, hey, parents of walkers, to, to make sure that there is awareness and like focused input from the parents of walkers who it sounds like are the closest to this particular primary problem that has been addressed? Just to, because there might be, I can't imagine, I don't know what the exact locus of, you know, walkers is in terms of the diameter around the school.
It's gonna start growing here pretty quickly.
What do you mean?
Because kids from my neighborhood will start riding their bikes and walking and stuff.
Oh, oh, because of the...
Because the weather, once the weather gets warmer.
Again, I don't know the best way to do this, but it might, I think it would be, maybe at the spaghetti dinner you could say, alright, let's have a walkers caucus or something, just to make sure that parents of walkers are made specifically aware of that, to do the things that you just said.
One thing too, Suzie, and I actually meant to bring it up earlier, is could, we maybe resend out a communication about drop-off and, I know, I know. In light of, the weather's getting warmer, kids are gonna start, the routines are gonna start changing because kids are gonna be riding their bikes. I'm totally trying to help you out here.
I'm giggling because I have a newsletter.
In draft.
Oh, does it happen in there? Shut up. Okay, so Suzie and I share a brain now. But my thought was, is one of the things I've noticed, because I don't drop off very often either, but when I do, people line up so early and that, that's, that's part of the, that's one of the safety and issues is that it causes such a commotion that the buses can't make this turn because there's so many cars lined up and they're lined up too early for drop-off. Like drop-off is eight, eight fifteen and there's parents out there at eight o'clock ready to go. So, I mean, maybe just like as part of your spring update for kindly...
Some, some of it too is the side lot. Some parents have been using that and then dropping off. We're responsible for the children's safety as the adults. And when parents use that as a drop-off space and we don't see the students coming, that's really dangerous. And so that's part of what was gonna go in the newsletter as well as when I see parents doing that, I just as gently and kindly as I can walk over and just say, this, it's a safety issue and we wouldn't want a car coming around and your child coming out of the woods and us not knowing it. So just people stop using that because I think they think it's so long or they have to wait. But there's a reason for the protocol.
Right.
It really is children's safety.
So I do think that, so to answer your question, I think that's, that's actually one of the biggest things is reeducating, raising awareness, reeducating, and, you know, having protocols in place so that parents understand that these are, these are to keep your kids safe.
Yeah, I think every opportunity we can do that the best, because it's, we have ideas of a plan that could maybe be a much more all-inclusive, long-term plan. But in the interim, it would be helpful to do exactly that at every opportunity we can.
And one of the things too, when you're speaking to people, that, at least, and I'm only bringing this up because I just, I just talked to a big group that we were all on vacation together, so. And they were asking me questions about this project. And one of the things that came up was the, the conversation about, about staging the project. And we, we've talked about that in, in our meetings before, that it's just not cost-effective to stage something this big because the majority of the work is actually the dirt work and the, the groundwork, so.
And they said it would actually cost more money.
It would actually end up costing more.
Cement and...
Yeah, at the end. So I think that that's something that people think of, that they think is gonna save us money, but it's not. And also then that also create, creates a safety issue, because then you have this construction zone while kids are in school and that's a whole, we don't want that either, so. I say we, I mean, I assume you maybe feel the same way, but sorry.
No, I, I, I agree. I think the part that I just wanted clarity on was the status of that plan, because we've seen the plan at three meetings, or however many meetings it was, and each time there was like a different level of like acuity of, we need to make, you know, what's the next step on this plan? And then, and then I felt like it, all we voted on was to have the budget hearings. And that, so that's the part where I was a little confused about the status of the plan.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that the, the renderings that we got, I mean, they're just that, they're renderings. So, I mean, obviously, once, and, and they are based on the site survey though, so they're accurate. And that's, that is something to clarify with people. I mean, I know John Hayden had asked about the drainage.
We were gonna buy land. I heard that from someone that we were buying land.
We're not buying any land, that's the other thing. That's, that's not accurate. So, so all the proper surveying has been done. So even though, even if it adjusts a little bit, because there, there were things that came up, do we actually need to move the propane? They won't know that until they get in there and that could save us money. So there's things in the, in the plan that will adjust once they kind of start and once we get actual, real quotes.
Right, that was one, one quote.
That was one quote and one high-level, you know, and he said that was like worst-case scenario, so. Does that help at all?
It does. No, it definitely does. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to un...
No, it's, I think it's great. No, I think it's good because we kind of, we like, it's been a few months since we have an in-depth conversation about it. And I know we met, as in myself, Ellen, Chris, and the chief met after one of our meetings and discussed it more. And, yeah, I think we're all on the same page, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think what happened was we had asked for an updated version of it and then we saw it for the first time and to be able to discuss it with a lot of members of the public who were already, I was glad to have folks there, but I got the impression that the public's impression was that we were, we were starting with that tomorrow, that we were ready to go. And that was a little hard to take, because I wanted to say, we just are seeing this for the first time now and we're making conclusions as well.
Yeah, no, so I think, I think the delay is, has been a positive one, because we can get way more community input and have, so I think the spaghetti, the idea behind the spaghetti dinner is just to have some information and it can be very high-level.
So I'll go with what I have in my brain and my paper here. And if there's any materials, timelines or things that folks whip up.
And that, in, in letting them know that we will be having more formal
Yes.
informational meetings about this with renderings, people can look in PowerPoint slides, like all the visuals, all of that stuff that is in the plan.
So we can get some preliminary materials to, for the spaghetti dinner, I think to get the conversation started.
Just to get the conversation, yeah, it's more of a conversation starter and not so much a, this is what we're doing.
A large-scale, in-depth presentation.
No.
I'm gonna make a, a 3D rendering in spaghetti, out of spaghetti.
Sweet. I love it. Make sure to take a picture.
Exactly.
I think that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the school safety project? Anything from you guys at the SAU?
No, I think just, it was helpful for me to pull up my notes so that I could recall what we had discussed in terms of next steps and to just, as you said, it's been a while since we've discussed it. So just to refresh my own memory as to what the plan is and really slowing it down and making sure that we're engaging the community as a whole.
Last question that I have about this, Ellen.
Yes.
When is it anticipated that we would hear about that grant that we are...
We did not get it for this year because we would've had to
Have started.
Have started.
Thank you, okay.
So we would reapply.
Correct, we'll continue to reapply.
We'll continue to reapply for the same.
So is it always gonna, is it always gonna be disjointed? Like we will always have to make the decision before we know if we're getting a grant? That's unfortunate.
Makes it more challenging, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
But the grant was not substantial.
Correct.
Or significant.
It was a very small amount.
Component compared to the, the size of the...
It wasn't going to change the end numbers and the, the tax implications enough to really...
I agree.
I mean, of course, we want it.
Yes, every little bit.
Every little bit we can lower would be fabulous, but
Percentage-wise.
It's percentage-wise, it's, it's kind of a blip on the radar. Okay, Vision Summit.
That was just a reminder to everybody that we're having the Vision Summit on March 26th from 5:00 to 7:00. There will be food and childcare. And as a refresher, the purpose of that is to take a look at our vision statement again from the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice as we near the process of strategic planning.
I think there's definitely some confusion in the
Community?
Community.
Okay.
They think it's a DEIJ meeting.
Okay.
So if you could maybe pass that on to the messaging of, I, I mean, I've been correcting people that it's, it's looking at the vision statement through, exactly what you said.
It's much more macro-level, like it's large, broad.
Yes.
A vision statement is really broad and just looking at the vision statement through that lens.
Exactly. So I think that that may be some clarifying
Okay.
language might be good.
Thank you for that feedback.
Of course. And it's not necessarily people in our town, actually, it's people in Exeter that asked me about it. So I was like, I'm feeling wrong way.
Yeah, we'll go back and look at our messaging and make sure we add additional clarity, especially as the date's coming up, so. No problem.
Attendees, are they, anybody in the SAU, are folks not in the SAU welcome to attend as well?
Community-wide.
Yeah, I'm just anticipating, I don't know if I can make it, but I'm just hoping that we have some mechanism to make it a positive experience.
There's, last I heard, there's quite, it's gotten a pretty good RSVP rate, but I don't know.
So there's an RSVP?
Yeah, there's an RSVP to it, so.
What's that RSVP do?
I can't recall, but...
I can't either, but they need it for food. And childcare, because on the, on the RSVP it asks if you need childcare.
It's probably coming up in the next week or so.
Yeah, I think it's, we just got another email about it.
Yeah.
So, it's in there. Anything else? Our next meeting is April 4th.
As we get ready for next year, I've had a couple of parents inquire about before-school care, because some folks are trying to like look at other career choices and we're wondering if that would ever be a possibility.
Drop 'em off at my house.
So what's happened in the past is that there, for a company to come in, like at Great Bay or YMCA, our numbers are so low compared to Astratum or Exeter. So that's typically why we haven't had a before-school program.
That with low numbers, you're, obviously the cost is higher because of, you know, you still need the same amount of, not necessarily the same exact amount of staff, but you obviously need staff to supervise the students.
And on top of that, just like everywhere, there's a shortage in not only workers, but that type of worker. And there has to be two and they have to have a supervisory certification. It's, it's layered, so.
Jenny, just a question. I'm always happy to see what new business we're discussing, but the first time I see it is when we get the agenda. Is that what you and Ellen do when we prepare the agenda, what's gonna be on the new business? Like I was...
Yes, and this, Suzie.
So I was thrilled that we had the counselor here to discuss, but I didn't know what was happening. Was that, do we have like a calendar of things that we're gonna be seeing each one?
So we have a, we have a draft schedule of the months in which we review certain types of information, specifically to talk about data, so like a data review schedule, and it is very, it's very fluid.
Yeah, I don't need to see it, I was just curious.
It's something that Suzie and I look at and that, so it's a collaborative effort. So Suzie and I talk about, you know, what might be helpful for the board to know. And then I, and then Jenny and I also have a conversation about developing the agenda and what her thoughts are.
I just wanted to know if there was anything I should have done to, like, because I never know how to prepare. Yeah, I'm like, oh, we're learning social emotional learning this time, which is awesome and it's always helpful when we have visitors and stuff, but it made me question or ask myself, should I be more involved, should I, does that mean there's an issue with social emotional...
Maybe we can make it clear that there was, that there was a presentation, so that you didn't have any, you didn't have any homework to do.
Yeah, because I think when Ellen and I need to go through the agenda, we, if there's something that I think you guys need, like more info to be prepared.
Yes, no, I totally agree. I never feel unprepared.
We talk about that too.
I just, when I, when I see it, I always wonder, huh, I wonder if there's an issue or something and then, you know, oh, cool.
What's the nature of the topic, sure. That can be, I think, made more clear without a problem.
Because I also don't, when I, because we get, we're receiving these with nice adequate me-time, which I really appreciate, so thank you to all involved in getting them to us. But if it is something that I have a question about, I'm always like, am I able to?
You can always email Ellen.
You can email Ellen.
Ellen, you're the person.
Yes, absolutely.
Because, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, you can go straight to Ellen.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that.
And if then she has to ask me, then she'll ask me and we'll play telephone. It's fun.
And I probably won't, especially now knowing that that's generally how those work, but, thank you.
It takes a village, we're all in a village.
It does. So I know I'm kind of skipping ahead, but our next, our meeting in May, I am out of town for that meeting and I know we can, we can still meet, because we would have a quorum, but I didn't know if anybody would be open to moving that meeting to...
We can go back to Wednesday that week.
Well, I'll be out that whole week, so I didn't know if it would be possible to meet the next week. If not, then it would just have to be two of you.
I mean, I'm fine at that point, like...
Like if we could move to Monday, the 6th, or, or I don't know what everybody's schedule is. I'm, I mean, I'm pretty open, I just, that was my...
Can we maybe wait till next meeting or do you want to do it now?
I was just trying to catch people's schedules before they, they got insane.
I mean, we could do the 8th, because I know Wednesdays are easier for you, Bobby. Because math team's over at that point, so my Wednesday nights are fraying good.
Is that the beginning of a new Wednesday era?
No, because I'm still doing math team next year.
What about you, Ellen? What do you?
I could do... I could do either of those.
You could do either of those.
Suzie?
Yeah, are you, aren't you traveling soon?
June, not until June.
Oh, not until June?
Not until June.
But you'll, yeah, we were, oh, we were, we were going to maybe move the June meeting to, right?
That's up to y'all. Bye. Bye.
We'll do one meeting at a time.
Let's do one meeting at a time.
I'm going to attend my daughter's graduation.
Yes, no, that's fine. You go, yes, of course you should, yes.
So, cart for the horse, what is our April meeting?
The 4th.
And that is happening, we're all around, good. I don't know that I have enough solid information to give you my opinion on the change.
That's fine, if I, could I have Ellen reach out in a few weeks, maybe?
Yes, totally.
Before, touch base before our next meeting?
I would, I would say the 6th would be harder for me, as Philip does not end his drum lesson until 6, so there's no way I could be here by 6.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't do, I'm sorry, I have a, I have another board meeting on Monday, the 6th.
So, it's the 8th?
The 8th.
Five, 8, at 6:00 PM is the potential.
8th.
Do we want to move it? Are you guys?
The 9th is NPTO.
Are you, are you moving it?
Which, so I have no childcare in our house, so that won't work.
No, that's fine, I knew that, that's why I was asking for like earlier in the week.
So, do you want to move it now, or wait a couple of weeks?
I feel like it's probably, you can make it on the 8th.
Yeah.
Just move it out, that's fine.
You want to move it in, okay.
So, what are we moving?